But you made it, but no.
The crazy thing, you could have had returns last year, have to pay taxes today.
That's it.
For that money that's already gone.
Yeah, that's the point he was making.
That's us, has been retired a month ago today. Insurance, because he's not sixty-five yet, nowhere near sixty-five.
Medical insurance, it's crazy.
Three grand a month.
For the two of you?
Cobra is eighteen hundred, so we're doing Cobra right now. With United Healthcare.
Yes, Karen just had to do that fifteen hundred a month for her. Regions.
Look at you. Do I need to piss off? Yes. Hi Mary, how are you? Swimming.
She's doing great now.
Great now, I stopped sweating.
Now the audio is not gonna.
Okay, Anne. Whatever, Anne, no faith in my abilities.
Charlie, sell in the Bahamas. My rough life.
It's too hot down.
We tried to sit outside and it was like.
Yeah, no. Oh, just that outside.
Hey, y'all.
Fifty-four elk in the yard.
I don't have you.
Charlie, can you say something again, see if we can hear you?
Say that again, Ben.
Not babies, I hope. You heard about our whole baby elk thing?
Oh, no.
Oh, we had baby elk.
The wet screen?
And there's a person feeding deer and I think it got stuck, that's right here, that's the. With deer feeding and it wanted to be a doodle with my dogs. I was in touch with fish and wildlife, but when I talked to Ben, it sounded like somebody called and said that there was a baby elk in distress.
He's on a sailboat.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me, folks?
We're still trying to get audio for you, Charlie.
Okay. Let's be working.
This one, I know, it can also be oats. And with molasses.
How about now, Charlie, can?
How about, yeah, I can hear you just fine. Am I coming through? There we go. Technology is with us tonight.
Sort of.
Good enough, anyway.
Just go with it, be positive.
Where are you, Charlie?
We're still in the Bahamas, uh, we'll be back in a few more weeks, uh, back in May. So Nancy's down here with me. And, uh, we'll, we'll reluctantly return to the United States in about three weeks.
If they let you back in?
Uh, they, if they let me back in, yeah, there's, there's always that doubt, that's, that's true.
Heard a little bit about the streets there, Charlie, that it's shared pedestrian golf cart?
Yeah, yeah, then they're about ten feet wide, um, for travel in both directions, so. Um, no one goes very fast and, uh, everybody shares the street, so. It's pretty, pretty interesting little urban environment in this little town, yeah. Yeah, Carolyn and the gang were down here, as you know, and, uh, Sage took over the town for a little while.
You can get started. Six o'clock. Well, let's call this meeting to order. Ben. Go through the online procedures, so Charlie knows what to do.
Certainly do that, um, public comment expectations, uh, generally from the public, uh, gets, uh, the attention of the chair, uh, for those in the audience, it's easy to raise your hand, um, by raising your hand. For those that are online, you can raise your hand by, uh, pressing. Star nine, if you're on the phone, or finding the raise hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Um, and then if you are acknowledged, you can mute or unmute, uh, by clicking the bottom left of the Zoom screen or star six. Uh, we have an open meeting, but the chair may limit individual comments to, uh, three minutes or ask disruptive individuals to leave the meeting. Persistent disruptions could result in the meeting being recessed and continued at a later date.
You got that, Mary?
Yeah.
Mary, anything you want to share with us tonight?
Mary, calm yourself. So, let's go. Pardon?
Anything you want to share with us tonight?
Are you asking for public comment? Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Mary Repar Stevenson, um, I recently attended a board of health meeting, which I try to do on a regular basis. Uh, board of health is very important to us. And one of the things that one of its members brought up was, uh, DEI. And, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, and, uh, of course, you know, we have the doctors there and they give their opinions on equity and their et cetera, et cetera, but one of, uh, I had not known what the DEI actually meant, so I did some research and. Curb cuts are DEI. Which is very, you know, news to me, but it's good news and, uh, you as the planning commission, I don't know what your role is, uh, in our streets and that, but I like curb cuts. As you get older, we all need curb cuts. And we all need those curbs, like the one at the bottom of Columbia, the one you don't run into on the east side. The west side needs to be more DEI. But, um, and, and all those things that help you to make your life easier. So I like DEI, uh, I didn't, I, I thought it just meant. About human beings, but apparently it has more social applications than I knew, maybe you all. You more than I did in this regard, so I think it's, uh, good to have some of those concepts in our planning. You know, you should always plan that you're going to get older, that your, your society is going to get older, your city is going to get older. And how are you going to take care of it as it gets older to make things more equitable? And I'm going to just share one story that one of the doctors from Vancouver, from our public health department, there, she's the deputy doctor. Uh, she, what is the difference between equality and equity? And, uh, I thought her, I got her story, some people were a little, huh, but, um, to be equal, everybody gets size eight shoes. Equity says you get the size shoe that fits you. And I thought that, that clarified it for me a little bit better and that I, I. It was a little equity, equality, so, you know, when we have a environment, um, it should be equitable. Not equal in the sense, we're all equal, but we all have different needs. Uh, somebody's in a wheelchair, somebody's, uh, walking or limping or something. So you as the planning commission, I think it's, you know, to look at planning in a more DEI manner, I think would. Is, is a good thing, uh, in our environment, none of us are going to get younger, we're all going to get older. It's except you, Tiffany. And so, uh, I, I just thought I'd share that tonight, uh, because those things are important. Uh, for people. For our communities too, thank you.
And I think it's, it's been important in our conversations when we talk about. Certain. Proposals that are out there in terms of what they generate, in terms of traffic and. Where are pedestrians, whether they're seniors or whether they're kids, I mean, you know, those are important topics. That's a good reminder, thanks, Mary. Anything else?
Why, why are you looking at me?
Okay, we have some minutes to approve, they're at one March tenth meeting.
I was absent, so.
Yep, I have read the minutes and I motion to approve the minutes from March tenth, twenty twenty-five, planning commission meeting.
I second the motion.
You have a motion and a second? And for the discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, minutes approved. The city had its first sort of sewer workshop, sewer ordinance workshop this last week. Uh, and. The attendance was lighter than I think I had expected. Um, but I did appreciate, I think, the displays and, uh, information that staff was able to provide folks who were there, even some of the city council members. I think learned a bit more about what was in there, why it was in there and why it, uh, was important and how it reflected the input that we all gave. Through the workshop sessions that we had that were well attended in terms of. Uh, trying to come up with, I think. Not so much the specifics, but the principles that they wanted the city embodied. Uh, there's a public hearing next Thursday night, I believe, is Thursday night?
Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Uh, and that's the first of two, right? Are, are there two?
Potentially, we'll definitely have this one and see how much changes, um, you requested of that, if there's minimal, then. I think the council would be able, uh, freely to make small changes and, or if there's a request for. Uh, quite a lot of change, then it's advisable to go back for another.
Is that this Thursday?
Thursday.
Yep.
Question, Jeff, uh, this has been going, this has been going on long enough that I, I've forgotten the answer to this obvious question, but what? Were you or somebody from the planning commission on the, on the committee?
I was.
That's what I thought, okay, all right.
And, and Charlie and I, at one point in time, it had also been sort of tasked to look at. Uh, a, a possible annexation policy. Extending services outside the city limits. And both of us came to the conclusion that it's pretty tough to talk about extending city services outside the city limits. But we still had questions about how to provide city services within the city limits. And, and that was really, I think, one of the earlier, uh, points in terms of the, got the discussion going in terms of. What are we going to do, uh, with the sewer ordinance, because. The way it's currently written. Isn't really workable, you know, for anybody that's within three hundred feet. Of a sewer line, they must connect, that's the current ordinance. And, uh, you know, that's just not workable in a community, it may be for a, for a large developer that was putting a subdivision or apartment building. But for an individual landowner to, to bear the burden of conceivably constructing three hundred feet of main sewer line. To be able to connect, that just really wasn't a very.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
That was recommended, um, to properties that already had some type of septic system and already. That they're going to be forced to connect within three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If it fails.
If it failed.
If the septic. And this isn't something that was recommended, this is what's currently on the books.
Currently on the books.
Got you.
Yeah, this is, this is more forgiving, the new, the new, the proposed ordinance is, uh, for small scale development, one or two lots. Um, is more, uh, forgiving in that it does allow people to continue to solve septic systems. Uh, onsite, onsite systems, and Jeff, I think that, I think this ordinance, um, does a good job of striking the balance, actually, I looked at it a little more carefully again today, and I, I, I think it does, and, um, the only thing I worry about, about it, and you probably do too, but it, it's, it's slightly. Um, it might slightly disincentivize. Um, infill development on existing serviced lots, serviced lots in the city, but. You know, that'll probably come out in the wash over time in the real estate market.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there's that trade-off in terms of how do you have it in, in orderly growth and how do you make? The best use of that land base that you have. And. And, and how do you accommodate those folks that? Or on septic systems, maybe on larger lots, how does it, how does it? Help us in terms of providing that sort of diversity of housing that we think we need? Both from the affordable housing, which we talk about and. Uh, and the upper more diverse, larger lot subdivisions that.
Is there an RCW that addresses this and says within two hundred feet?
There's a Washington Administrative Code and those are implemented by, um, the county sanitarium.
Okay, so we're not bound by it?
They still are, uh, to implement that, uh, but that's outside of the city reg. What's the, what's the current percentage of households on the sewer system versus on a private? You know, I don't have that specific, uh, number, I believe it's, um, somewhere close to, um, three quarters. Or on the sewer system? Sewer system. So, and so the corner that's left, is it just outline property that it's just too? Um, expensive to try to hook up? Some of this and some of that, and so. Okay.
When undeveloped.
I'm ready to, to walk through some of what we walked through in the workshop that answers some of these questions if, uh, if you want to.
Yeah, I think, I think we want to do that, I.
I'm interested.
Yeah, I think it's interesting too, if you go back and look at the history of sewer development in this, i- in the city. It's followed some, some unusual patterns, I guess, I mean, uh, in terms of how it was extended, so it does leave areas. Un-served well within the city and those that are on the fringes are served, so.
There's, there was a buzzword for urban planners, um, through the seventies and eighties called leapfrog development, where this is left vacant, while you go further out into the, the hillside in the country. We definitely have that as a, um, uh, dynamic here, but. Areas where leapfrogged and the sewer snaked up to serve it the most efficiently. And, uh, left it harder to develop some of the other ones that are closer in, and so they've been developed over time over the last fifty years with. Larger lot or single family.
Interesting.
But if, the, does the ordinance say if there is a lot and there's a sewer line running by it? If they want to build, they mandatory have to hook up to the sewer, that's what I thought. That's what I thought.
That would continue.
Okay.
Yeah. Ben, let's, why don't you just walk us through, I think that would be the best way to do it.
Charlie, apologies that this isn't, uh, at quite as dynamic for you, um, uh, watching from there and likewise for the public, uh, but just witnessing this, but try to walk through and we've got. Three stations, um, to look at, one is the physical setup of what, what's out there in the city and. Um, uh, what would have to connect or extend and connect or could develop on septic. There's also different timelines that would apply under two scenarios and then some of the financial impacts that, um, property owners, homeowners would realize, so. Um. This map has green where it's served by sewer, it has red where there's no, uh, development and. And then there's blue, which is on septic, so. Um, it's spread out around there and you can see it's just, it's not completely logical where things are. Uh, as we approach the ordinance, um, there's kind of three groups of stakeholders, that's different from, one stakeholder is, uh, the. Portions of the community that are currently on the sewer system, that's billed for all of that area. And they're paying the monthly rate to support the build for all of that area, we're just completing that. Um, the infrastructure improvements at the plants, uh, we don't. Expand the plant to serve one household at a time, when you expand the plant, you make a lumpy investment, and so you have to do a big investment at once. And recruit those costs over time and pay for it over time, you don't have a bank to, to just pay for it, so. Just a quick question on that, at what percentage utilization do we have on the current infrastructure? I don't, I don't. Okay. It's, it's, it should all be in the sewer plan, and so easily identifiable, they, they go through all of that. And have to just decide, so easily identifiable, but I don't. Um, so there's that group that's on green, uh, that's paying a rate to support the growth into other areas. Sort of treatment of waste coming from other areas when growth would occur. Uh, there's a group that is currently adjacent to, uh, a sewer line, the red lines. On the map that isn't connected and should be compelled to connect. Right now under the existing regs, that would continue on with the future regs too, so. If the city council were to pass this, there's a, a group of property owners who would be getting a notice immediately, it's time to connect. Third group, uh, the stakeholder group are the ones that are not immediately adjacent to sewer. But where these yellow lines are, where a sewer line could be put in, in the future. Uh, and so they, they may have to connect at some point if that, that sewer line goes in. So those are the three groups and balancing the interests of all of those is not easy, we've tried to, uh, with the. The system or the, the draft of the ordinance, and we'll listen to the public to see whether we got it right with the balance that we struck, but. Um, broadly. If there's a sewer line adjacent to the property, you still have to connect. Existing, uh, developments, existing septic system, you have to connect. If there's no sewer line available, meaning flooding the property or flooding easements. Property benefits from, then only certain types of development have to connect. And with this, we heard from the community, um, that's, uh, is concerned about a lot of growth and is concerned about a lot of subdivision and wants to facilitate. Development of single family homes on large, large parcels or, uh, uh, property owners' ability to divide their property in half. And so you can do single family home or duplex slash ADU, uh, ADU is what the zone would, would support. In those areas, or you can do a land division of two lots, which could result in two homes. Um, multifamily, if you're going to do those in an area that's not, where sewer is not available, you would have to extend and connect. Uh, commercial industrial, same land division of three lots or even more, same, so. Um, this is one where. Uh, we are balancing things, we're balancing what we, hear the community saying they want with less development. Um, there is some concern that since we're removing these from the marketplace, uh, for now, or we're increasing the cost of these. That it may make these, um, the only feasible alternative. And that'll take up all the areas that are in red right now, and there's no room for land division or, um, uh, the type of housing growth that might be necessary moving forward, so. Little bit of concern there, but it's pretty clearly heard from the community that they're supportive of this and that's what the regulations request.
I think it's important too to note that. You have to have a larger lot to be able to have a septic system, that's the requirement, so. If you have a large area and it is potentially developed to septic systems. You're going to have a fairly low density of housing and, you know, that. There's a price you would pay for that if you ultimately want to put sewer in that, because. It's the same infrastructure cost with fewer things. Yeah, plants.
So, that's, um. That's it, one of the things that we wanted to focus on, um, in how we presented this too, was that these decisions aren't made over. Uh, there is a financial impact to them, but that's not going to totally blind the idea, and so we laid out, um, two different timelines. One is a timeline where it's a city funded project, a city, city developed project, and so those are. Uh, identified in our capital improvement plan. Which we adopt every year, we update and adopt every year, and the benefit of that is it shows us where we're going to be spending. Money the following year, and so the city council can develop their buckets to support, uh, where we're going to be spending money. Uh, and then has a longer list of, uh, six-year projects that are, these are priorities. Those can all change, they're not locked in until they're locked in, um, and in the one-year cycle, but nothing should be a surprise about where sewer. Might extend, because it's. Been identified in the past, so. Once it goes through there, uh, the following year then, we're looking for grant funds, we're looking for funding of some sort to make sure that we can build the project. Uh, then we go into design. Um, well, one thing about the, this. Property owner's expectations up here, uh, city outreach timelines on, on the bottom, so. Once design starts, we will inform, uh, property owners adjacent to the extension area that. There's a project in process here and we need to select where your stubout will be, city runs that as part of the project, and so it's. At the edge of the street when somebody goes to connect to it, so. Well, we will want to explore with you where that should be, or review the terrain of the site, the development to the potential development areas of the site. If you want to influence that, get a hold of us, but that's like two years into the concept. Uh, of a project where design starts, construction will be the following year. And then after, uh, construction concludes, there's a ninety-day timeline, so there's about a two-year. Two years in here where you've got to notice that there's a project that's coming up. There's going to be a financial impact to that, you can start saving, because once it's there, you'll have to connect. Um, about two years. When the project is done with construction, we send that notice of availability, the regs say that if you connect within ninety days. Great, connect within ninety days, if you can't, uh, tell us about your intent to connect and, um, that could qualify you for some of the financial, um, incentives or, for phase in. Concepts that are, have that drafted, so those would continue for three years, uh, afterwards, and I'll talk about exactly what those are with, with these graphics here. Um. That's the same one, so seven years from the beginning to the end is when property owners should be aware that something's going on. It heats up, once, once design starts through construction, then there's an responsibility for them, uh, with construction, so. The other type of project is where developer does come in and they're planning a subdivision somewhere where they. Now we know, again, that there's going to be a line that's extended, and here's a group of property owners that's, um, willing to engage with that. So the design and construction of those usually follows a shorter timeline, because, um, they've already got the funding in place and can move straight into that. And then, then we're back in that, that three years of phase in process, so. Less ability to, for the city to dictate the outreach and that, we'll still do our best to make sure that the project is done. And where it all hurts, it'll, on those laterals, so it's part one, construction project. Connecting does have a cost. And in the first round of outreach that we did last year, that was terrifying for people, and it was terrifying because of the big numbers. Um, so. Uh, a lot of the efforts that the subsidy did was about that and came up with a system that, uh, has some connection incentives built in, has, uh, some phase in options for. For people, so there's a lot of detail on this, um, broadly, two different, two different scenarios, one is. Uh, well, one is somebody that is low to moderate income. And, uh, low to moderate income, uh, has greater ability to benefit from, from all programs. That's, uh, based upon your household size and how much you make, uh, in a year. It, for a household of three, uh, you benefit if you're making a hundred and six thousand or less from all sources. Throughout the year.
That's the four hundred times.
Four hundred percent of the, yeah, of the federal poverty rate. And so that's, that's the current rate now for the world. I'll start with the, those making above that. So the biggest benefit that somebody could. Receive from all this would be to connect within that ninety days. If you connect within that ninety days, the system development charge is waived. System development charge is the cost of buy into the system. It's reimbursing all the existing rate payers for what they financed to build that plant larger to. To get it to the point that it can accept waste from the new, the new connections. So that's not an insignificant number in that to range us from. Eight thousand to just over twelve, no, just, sorry, looking at the wrong one. Sixty-six hundred to eleven thousand, six hundred. So that's not insignificant. If you have the means and you've been able to get a contractor going and ready to start digging. In that period, then you get it done within ninety days, then that'll be waived entirely.
What is the cost per foot from the stubout to a home?
It will depend on the contractor, on the market. What we did when we did some analysis for a different program is the full cost to connect. In twenty twenty-two. Based on the system development charges that are set, it was based on conversation with contractors. The full cost was twenty-two thousand, three hundred. Rehoming the house, making the sewer connection.
Depending on the, depending on the footage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And the assumption for that was thirty foot length. So property owners that better have a set of that criteria than that would be.
So you would have almost a fifty percent break if you did it immediately? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. You'd still have to pay your contractor. Yeah. We would waive that. If you're low income or low to moderate income, we waive that. Whether you connect to ninety days or. You don't have to connect. If you have the means to. And, and you say that, you don't have to connect. You have the option to pay a penalty for not connecting. And that penalty has not yet been set by the city council, but the draft says that it could be up to the monthly sewer. So right now that's a hundred and forty dollars. You could cut that penalty in half. If you state that you intend to connect and so that you pay half of the, the penalty rate for the three years. So the idea is saving something so you can save to pay for the cost there. There's also a deferral of those system development charges where you don't have to write a check. You enter into an agreement and pay it off at sale or transfer of the property. So nothing out of pocket right now. Getting that cost in half. Giving the ability to save up so it won't pay for the other party. And then if you don't respond, you're paying a hundred percent monthly. That's where that's drafted at. Low to moderate income would also, could also benefit from the fifty percent of the penalty. And then once they connect to them, they're subject to lesser rates and. Can benefit from rate breaks that are built into our code of our rating. System, when they're going to find someone that kind of, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The seven-year timeline, is the goal to have all of the non-service properties eventually hooked up?
The goal from the committee, they were able to coalesce around that. Early on in the process.
Okay.
Yeah. Here's what we want to do. We want there to be sewer available everywhere in the city.
And is that what is going to be tried to, to become accomplished in that seven-year timeframe?
Not in the seven-year timeframe, not at all. So this is. We would only, what, the way the rates are built currently is that it would support one city funded extension every three years or so. Of course, if we were, if we borrowed funding somewhere else, we could do one, one potentially every year. Or have whatever capacity says, but what the rates are currently built for would be one every three years.
And that extension would be based on the funding available? Do you look to pick off the low hanging fruit on where, what areas you go for?
Yeah, that's the. That's the answer to ninety years. And when we're doing capital agreements, we've got a list of areas where we think, well, where it could go. Then, you know, it doesn't make sense to go there. What's the financial gain? And what's the environmental gain? Are there a bunch of failing systems there? Can we serve the needs of the community as developments that would happen and field development that would happen? What's the interest? So. Nothing set in stone for how that capital improvement planning works. It's a conversation with the community. It's a conversation with council about priorities and those shifts. You know, the desire shift and council priorities shift, so.
Then just a curiosity question, if we were to actually have all of the non-service properties serviced, then. How much more capacity would the plant need?
It was built for this.
Oh, perfect.
City limits plus, that is my.
So the, the funding is only for extensions of lines at this point then?
And there's still some undersized lines with the, the existing system that we need to increase in size.
Okay.
So capacity.
This capacity on the float.
But yeah, the sewer system upgrades that we've done in the last. Four years have been the plants and that's the big one. So that's not going to be a capacity bottleneck. Until at least one forty, add the road rates that we projected for some later time. It's just we'll monitor it as we go. Even plating, we did each of our four pump stations. And so there won't be a capacity bottleneck for those. We did the main interceptor line that goes to the plants. We're, we'll be doing a second one that comes out of one pump station and then goes to the plant and that's a capacity bottleneck right now. So once we get that done, then there's another one that we expect to reach capacity. Soon, and we'll need to monitor that to see, is it actually reaching capacity? And then, when we replace that one. Some of that.
Very interesting.
So that's what's been drafted. We have got some property owners that have submitted written comments since the meeting. Have attended the meeting and have submitted some written comments since the meeting. We've also been looking at it and have identified some of the same. Potential issues that this could create that some of the participants at the workshop noted too. So there's concern that, for example, there's concern that hey. Send me my letter on zero day and I have ninety days to connect. Am I going to be able to organize a contractor, get permits and make the physical connection within that timeline? We don't know. So. There's a conversation to have or some potential redrafting to do to extend that timeline or. Instead of connection being the, the bar that they need to meet some lesser a bar.
Start a construction.
Yeah.
Both contracts signed.
Yeah. So we'll look into something there.
Well, I got a process, process question. I, I guess that was a good explanation, Ben. Thank you. Given Jeff, that you were on the committee, I, I assume the city council is not expecting to hear from us. Planning commission, us, meaning officially, you know, you, you were there representing us. I don't, I'm assuming that we don't have to weigh in officially before their meeting in the, in, in May, right?
It's not a zoning code amendment and that's the one, that's the one that officially needs a recommendation from.
Which, which code amendment? I'm sorry, Ben.
Zoning code. Even subdivision code doesn't need a recommendation. They've not given you all the, the courtesy to do that and they think.
Right.
They would welcome any support or concern the planning commission has. If there is, is only three days away. So I don't know that I've set you all up the best to, to comment. Or to assess concerns.
But it is certainly. Relevant to the work that we do here in terms of making land use decisions. And I think as you go back to the capital improvement plan process. In terms of where are you thinking about doing these extensions? And what's the criteria you're using? Do we have a high density of septic systems in a particular area that's. Creating a, a sanitary problem? Well, then maybe that's what you do. But are there other areas that if we extended it, we might see? You know, a better, higher density in terms of, of construction than one that more. Is more consistent with the underlying zoning that we put in place and hope to see. So I think the goal certainly for the planning commission. In working with the public works department to say. Hey, if you're planning these sewer extensions, let's talk about what we have out there and how it really reinforces. What we have in the comprehensive plan and the zoning in terms of the, the growth patterns we want to see.
Oh, yeah. And, and back to the future, as you mentioned, this does, if assuming this gets passed, this does set the table for us to at long last. Take up the annexation issues.
It does, it does. Very.
Well, I, I see some gaps here, some data gaps. Do you know which septic fields are failing? And how do you get to find out if they are failing or they're not failing? Cause a lot, a lot of these septic fields are old. And, and even though somebody may have it pumped out, their septic system might not. Be all there. And I speak from experience. So we had a fire at our farmhouse and we had to replace our forty-year-old septic field. And when we dug it out, it had no bottom. It was concrete. But the concrete had totally disintegrated. So how, how are we going to find out? How our septic fields are doing? And is that part of Carolyn's septic workshop?
There, there is a septic system care workshop that's occurring on Wednesday. It's separate from this. It's a tool to assist those that are on the blue here or countywide. Maintain their septic system for however long they, they could be. So they'll hear from the county sanitarian, they will hear from septic pumpers, septic designers. And then the city will be there to talk about sewer options when they're necessary. So that is not explicitly addressed. It's not explicitly a city goal one way or. There to replace septic systems.
But you've got to know if they're failing because if they're failing, they're polluting their, your ground. They're all, all the shit flows downhill. And so you have to, and, and is your sewer plan congruent with your transportation plan? Cause if you were doing something on the transportation side, then you could do it at the same time. To put in a sewer, save yourself some money instead of digging up things later. So, yeah.
That's, that process is accommodated through the capital improvement plan, that, that one year and six-year look ahead to make sure that we're aligned. Cause we all have it all. And it's been a goal to make sure we're able to have those savings.
And is the city going to just keep giving waivers? For, for septic fields?
The year is still an appeal option for anybody that has to connect.
Well, I mean, like, you know, Rick, when he wanted to do something up here, he asked for a waiver on, on the current property. And that, and at one point I think it was, he was close to getting it. I don't know if he has, but there are some waivers higher up.
Yeah, there, there have been. And so that is subject to the, the will of the council and that waiver is proposed.
If you keep giving waivers, then people are going to keep putting septic fields in and then. Yeah, it just snowballs. That's what I saw. Thank you.
Does the city have any laws or rules regarding questionable septic systems? So if a neighbor says, I've got issues on my land below this person, what, what does the city do about that?
We refer them to the county environmental health department and the sanitarian for review. At which points we don't do a lot of follow-up unless we get the notice that. A call from a person says, okay, I need to connect now.
There's also a statutory requirement in terms of septic tank inspections. I think it's every.
It's every two years. I believe it's every three, but it's something that we don't, it's not on us to implement that.
That's right. That goes back. And, and I think that's another situation. I'm not so sure it's. It's an ordinance in place or a statute that's in place, but I'm not so sure how it's administered or enforced. And that's always a problem with, with the ordinance out there. You know, you can have a great set of ordinance, but if the waivers are given. You know, it does make a difference how good the ordinance is.
And there is no inspection process at this point, is there?
My understanding of it is that you are required to have it pumped every three years and part of the pumping service. This could, my understanding could be challenged on Wednesday night, but the, the pumping service performs the inspection. That allows that property owner to communicate with the county, the regulator on.
So the county is the regulator on all septic systems?
Do they have enforcement?
There's failure.
They do. Okay. There was some failed septic stuff in Carson and it's very expensive.
It is expensive. Yeah.
And I don't know if homeowner, homeowner's insurance covers that.
Question.
Ours did. Costs forty grand.
Yeah, it's expensive.
But Charlie, back to, I think to the question you posed, you know, are. Do we need to make any input to the city council? And if so, how do we, you know, how do we do that? You know, what, what is your interest? And it, it could range too. Just from the, from what we, we've had tonight and I think probably folks' ability to go out and really look at the orients. We're not going to have an in-depth discussion of the details of this draft ordinance. So I, we're not going to go there, but is there something on a higher level saying? Hey, we think this is a great step in the right direction. Now, there may be implementation details to work out. But we think this is a positive move. Something along that line of. To, just to say, hey, we've looked at this and we think it's a step forward. Or no, we think there are fatal flaws here. Send it back to the, to the committee. So. You know, I, I throw that out. I mean, that's, that's really up to us because again, we're not required to make a recommendation to the city council. But the city council would certainly welcome our recommendation if we chose to provide.
If, if in the. The capital improvement plan, you decide where the new extensions are going to go. Does it make sense at that point in time since now this is going to change the fundamental? A prospect of what that property might be able to do to look at zoning when you do that? And is that in the plan at this point that we?
It is not, but it's certainly something that, it's a need that we considered. So as you go up Loop Road. This side of the street is R two or R three. And this side of the street is R three, multifamily residential. That side of the street is single family residential. And the rationale for that was that largely that was in the county when annexation occurred. It occurred when septic was not available to the area and so they zoned it for the, the lower density. Even though right across the street could be a different neighborhood. So it, your point is not lost. It's something that we've noticed and adjusted and sewer extension out there. In twenty twenty-two. We didn't initiate a zone change discussion adjacent to that extension. We've communicated with landowners that we would certainly review your application and bring it to the planning commission. It's in an area where the planning commission have already considered rezoning to allow greater density. That stalled out in twenty twenty-one. So. Yeah. We're working with the capital improvement. We're working to align. That stalled out in twenty twenty one. So um yeah, we're working with the capital improvement. We're working to align. Uh a rational plan for all the different systems, the parks, the streets, uh water, sewer, storm, city hall, fire hall. Um we're aligning those things to be rational. We have not overlaid the um zoning or rezoning considerations onto that. And make make that rational too.
There's been talk about possibly doing that.
At the staff level.
Okay.
Staff and property owner level.
Makes sense.
I think it goes back to to remember, this doesn't have anything to do with. The decision towards of where a a main sewer line goes. This just says if there's one there. And you meet the criteria, you have to hook up and here are your options. And goes back to, I think, the conversation that the planning commission would be involved in. Goes back to the capital planning processes we're looking uh ahead and saying, where are those sewer lines going to go? Which I think goes back, I think, was the question Tony that you were really looking at. That's where our our real interest is. We're not interested so much in. How this, we're interested in having this ordinance here because it talks about if if the sewer is there, we're going to see. Uh development that's more consistent with the underlying zoning and the comprehensive plan. And to leave it.
Thinking about Tony's point, I mean, I think maybe more relevant than to the city council, for the city council. Uh you know, it it's more relevant that they know that we're going to now be able to bear down on the annexation issue. And we want to have a role in the capital improvements planning to make sure that this this ordinance integrates with the rest of that. Um you know, rather than they're expecting to hear from us whether they should pass it or not, you know. I I'm I'm more focused, I think we are maybe all more focused on how's this going to affect the comprehensive plan? And and is it going to screw up the zoning ordinance? And does it set the table for us to, you know, come up with some annexation policy? I think I think if the council knows we're going to, we're going to look at those issues, that's probably more helpful to them than telling them green light, red light.
Curiosity question. If you decide that you would like to have the area zoned for higher density. Do you get pushback from a property owner? If you, as the planning commission, unilaterally change the zoning to higher density?
We certainly did when we considered it in two thousand, two thousand one, where there was um. Right now, we have five residential zones. City of Stevenson has five different ways where we anticipate our neighborhoods are going to be different in the future. And that's a lot. And so we looked at removing uh one of those. And um. There was concern about that. It 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 engaged that fear of the unknown that we all have and um what. What are you planning for my lot and what could my neighbor do adjacent to it? So there's there's concern, there's fear uh related to things and.
So it's not so much that the person that owns the property thinks they're going to have to now make it a um. A higher density property. It's that what the neighbor might do.
It's both.
Okay.
It's and there's there's an incongruence with um. What Stevenson is to people today and what Stevenson would be if land is dividing. Um and so a lot of people, we have a lot of people who have recently relocated to Stevenson and they chose Stevenson to where it is now. And they don't want to see that change. And so the idea that uh some of our regulations might facilitate land development and change or require the land development and change is. Is not what uh the community, as it's as it's composed or parts of the community, want.
Interesting.
You can't force somebody to develop their property. If they have a big lot, they can't be forced to parcel it out.
One can force, whether one should force, is the the conversation.
Well, I see a lawsuit in your future if you try to do that. That's property rights, isn't it?
It's all property rights that we deal with.
Yeah.
And so in in the question of whether one should do that. We've heard strongly and have followed it. No, we won't. But you can have something that uh phrase would be a um minimum density. And so we have maximum densities and we're used to dealing with that. So if you're going to divide a lot, it needs to be six thousand square feet or fifteen thousand square feet at the smallest. And so that's the maximum number of lots that you can have is based on that small unit. You can have a minimum density that says if you're going to develop this property, you need to do at least X units per acre. Many communities do that.
Per zoning.
The zoning would be changed to to state. You have to.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have those provisions. We don't have current zoning at this point. And and even if if you did, you wouldn't. If if I had a, say, a two acre piece of property in an area that was owned for, say, quarter acre lots. No one could force me to divide to divide that if I just wanted to keep it as a single block.
That's what Barry is asking. Yeah, I think so. That's crucial.
But there's something important. I think there's a detail in this ordinance that again, I think is helpful. It says. That if you're going to subdivide, you've you've got to make sure that the lots will potentially have access to sewer when it's. I'm paraphrasing here, but the lot the lots that you're creating will potentially have access to sewers when the sewers are available. Right? So so that again is, you know, consistent with, we've allowed for more density. It's voluntary as to whether people actually implement that, but we're saying which in effect, you can't. You can't game the system and create lots that are unserviceable. Um because the city expects that the possibility remain for them to be developed to their full intensity, right? I think I got that right.
Yeah, and that was one of the concerns that the committee had was sewer line along along one side of a of a subdivision. And only those those lots immediately along that that sewer line would be hooked and forced to hook up and none of the others would.
Yeah.
We have an option for people to. Us.